Good afternoon and welcome to the Standing Committee's meeting for Tuesday, June 18th, 2024. All council meetings will be livestreamed on the city's website, and for guest speakers, please do not turn your microphones off of joining us at the table. Our first order of business is roll call. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Kell Smith. Ms. Warwick. Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Ms. Trossberger Chair.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before city council. Profanity will not be permitted. Please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Georgia Petropolis. We have Georgia joining online? Looks like no. But that moves us on to our next registered speaker, Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Belsuver, Alasa, Tibet. Global Intelligence Society candidate for president 2024. GlobalIntelligenceSociety.org, 412-969-7997 is the primary U.S. contact tell text. Vote by voter verification for whom and freedom of speech uncensored are key. City council concern is citizen's speech. Public comment decorum, the best gold. Decadent lemon, the worst, like Mr. Charlin and Mr. Coghill babbling while people were doing public comment this morning. Is there freedom of speech at the University of Pittsburgh where I taught in modern Israel? Arabic, anybody? Salam? Hebrew? Shalom? I am not Jewish. Consider Africa Hauser, Mafi, Caillou, vest. The Democratic Party and Republican Party here and across the United States want you to say to them, "You are the best thing that has ever happened to us." Don't may? Why? World War I and II, Civil War, Korea, Vietnam, Afghanistan, Iraq, more than 1 million kids dead. Mafi muni, they say, is the worst. Pittsburgh kids who say so, shut them up. Shut pro-Palestine Pittsburgh kids up. Use Israel-made Pegasus and U.S. DPRP Biden-made FISA to cut off their mics. This is impure gold. Consider Asia Nehango. Saite? No? The best? I and our kids, many of us, so often get saite, the worst. Unverified information and intelligence from oldie governments. Our millennials and Gen Z's have had it. They have had it with the DPRP who say, "We oldies are the best thing that has ever happened to you." Consider Biden and Trump at the moment. Reversing it via Gamma Skies in love. I, we are the best thing that has ever happened to you. We need to listen to this. We need to listen to them, what's underneath the Palestine-Israel protests. Latin America, Espanol. Mejor? Best? Vida? Life? Ke? Why? Our kids are screaming. Oldie DPRP government has made for us catastrophic national debt, crushing educational individual debt, cataclysmic entitlements for dementiaites, ELE nuclear terror in this city and across the United States. Aura de tonto. Fool's gold. You are the payer, the worst thing that has ever happened to us. Poor Ke? Why? You don't know what we feel. They say. We need to listen to what they say. Annie Lennox. Why?
Thank you very much. Our next registered speaker is Chief Poma Shachmam Yehalahi.
Greetings, everyone. My title is Poma Shachmam Yehalahi. I am the Chief of Medicine, Land Stewardship and Management with the Air Force Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. I am the chief grandinka of my lineal nation, the Onkwe Onwe Bakab, called Ushil Ushwi Il Nation, of Aborigines of the Americas. I'm coming again today for you to remind all of you that we, as the Aborigines, the Oktontons of the Americas, and here in particular, are responsible for crafting a constitution that you all took an oath to uphold, support, protect, and defend. And we, and our offspring, our progeny, are extremely tired of our rights being violated. With your entities that you govern, i.e. your police department, police force, violating our rights, we are not to be treated as if we are foreigners on our own lands. And it may be foreign to you to hear these things. We are adamant about invoking our rights and forcing our rights and exercising our rights with impunity. So every time we have altercations with any of your entities on this land that we still refer to as the Delaware Territory, which includes Pennsylvania, Virginia, Ohio, Nova Jersey, Nova York, we will continue. And then what will end up happening is accountability. I'm always peaceful and amicable. We've had multiple meetings over the course of five, six, going on six years now, and you have not honored your oath as it relates to Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3, and excluding Indians not taxed. We are a special, distinct, unique community of people. We are not Native Americans. We are not under the jurisdiction of the United States government. We have a government-to-government relationship with Congress. Everyone under Congress, states, cities, municipalities, Allegheny Counties, and all that, must uphold our rights, invoke them, and protect our people. Ayo.
Thank you very much. Our next registered speaker is Jaljib Chonul Kahin.
In like Alec Ining, that's proto-Monion for the lighting me honors the lighting you. Greetings. I am an Aboriginal American matriarch, and my title is Yajaljib Chonul Kahin, located in Delaware Territory, as you all would call Pittsburgh. My people are the original beings, the original stewards of our ancestral lands, the Americas, including the islands, the Onkwe Onway from our great law of peace. So my statements today again will reflect invoking my people's story, our perspective and our constitutional indigenous rights. Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3, and excluding Indians not taxed. That means we are not to be touched, we are not to be censured, we are not to be charged, we are not to be assessed, we are not to be put a strain on, put a burden upon, to be handled. We are not to be any of these things, to be put on a list or enrolled. We're not to be any of these nefarious actions. My people are acknowledged in multiple maxims of the law, in your, within your Constitution of the United States. Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3, excluding Indians not taxed. The Delaware Treaty, the Northwest Ordinance, the American Declaration of the Rights of Indigenous People, the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, House Congress Resolution 331, whereas my people are acknowledged to the development of the United States Constitution. And to refrain, and to reaffirm, per correction, the continuing government-to-government relationship with my people. And the 100th Congress Second Session and the list continues. We are not to be confused with Title 25 Native Americans, who are also within the box of person, persons, immigrants, foreigners, citizens, naturalized citizens, non-citizens, residents, humans, individual, all under the jurisdiction of the United States, which in fact is a corporation. You have not upheld your oath to the Constitution. Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3. My people, the Aboriginal Americans, have been reclassified as so-called Indian, so-called colored, so-called Negro, so-called Black. We are not social-political constructs. We are not to be under the jurisdiction of the United States. Thomasina v. O. Jordan case, Walter Ashby Plecker justified with the states, encouraging them to reclass non-reservation Indians to Negroes, which has since been repealed as unlawful. Therefore, all municipal offices, officers, citizens, immigrants, and all other foreigners are obligated to uphold their oath to the Constitution. Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3, and excluding Indians not taxed. We are not your abusers. The city is under the jurisdiction of the state. The state is under the jurisdiction of the Anglo-American foreign immigrant government. Uphold your oath to the Constitution. Are you going to continue to commit 18 U.S. Code to?
Thank you very much. Are there, there being no further registered speakers, we will now move on to any other speakers wish, any of those in the audience wishing to speak. Are there any speakers wishing to come to the podium? Any further speakers? There being no further speakers, we will now move on to our Standing Committee's agenda. And our first committee is the Finance and Law Committee chaired by myself.
Bill Number 89, Resolution Amending Resolution 909 of 2023, entitled Resolution Authorizing a Fee Schedule for 2024 Pursuant to Chapter 170 of the City Code to Reduce the Cost of Employee Parking.
Motion to approve. Discussion.
Leave us her intent to hold this?
Motion to hold two weeks.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of a two-week hold, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Bill be held two weeks. Moves us on to 563.
Bill 563, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Establish a Use Plan and a Fund for Festivals, which were in existence prior to or during the COVID pandemic, and were also impacted financially by the COVID pandemic as allocated in the City's American Rescue Plan.
Motion to hold one week.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of a one-week hold for 563, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Bill be held one week. That moves us on to new papers.
Bill 576, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Christopher Emales for Arbitration Services for an Amount Not to Exceed $6,034.88 Over One Year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 576, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Affirmative recommendation, Bill 577.
Bill 577, Resolution Authorizing the Execution of a Quick Claim Deed Convaying All of the City's Right Title and Interest into the City-Owned Property Located in the 12th Ward of the City and Designated in the Deed Registry Office of Allegheny County as Block and Lot 83S 301, 124 N 3, 6820, 2932, 4245, 7677, 8597, 99106, and 125A 371, to East Liberty Development, Inc., for considerations set forth herein relating to the full and final settlement of cases filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 577, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Affirmative recommendation, Bill 578.
Bill 578, Resolution Authorizing the Execution of Quick Claim Deeds Convaying All of the City's Right Title and Interest into the City-owned Property Located at 1039 Sulter Way in the 23rd Ward of the City and Designated in the Deed Registry Office of Allegheny County as Block in Lot 24F 68, to Wang Mao for $7,500 relating to the full and final settlement of a case filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas over one year.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 578, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Affirmative recommendation, Bill 579.
Bill 579, Resolution Authorizing the Execution of a Quick Claim Deed Convaying All of the City's Right Title and Interest into the City-owned Property Located at 425 Michigan Avenue in the 18th Ward of the City and Designated in the Deed Registry Office of Allegheny County as Block and Lot 14N 99, to Johnny Juanita Mohammed for $7,500 relating to the full and final settlement of a case filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas over one year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 579, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to invoices.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion. On my part, I will convey that we do have two from the Finance Department to Treasure Lawn Care LLC. If we're worked on on the same street, that totals over $5,000, but they're done on separate dates, so we should not need to waive the rules on invoices.
This is for the Department of Finance one?
Correct. Any further discussion? All those in favor of invoices, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommend, invoices are approved. That moves us on to P cards.
Motion to approve.
Second.
On P cards, I want to note there are, there were two PayPal transactions, one from the mayor's office for the MC for the International Day Parade, and the other from Parks and Rec for a storyteller at the Alphabet Trail and Tales and International Children's Theater Festival. We have receipts for both. Any further discussion on P cards? Seeing none, all those in favor of P cards, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Obstand opposed? We have one opposed or two opposed?
I'm an aye.
Okay. Well, I want to post, thank you. P cards are approved. That moves us on to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee chaired by Councilperson Warwick.
Supplemental Paper, Bill Number 602, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Directors of the Office of Management and Budget and the Department of Public Works to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements with Licensed Plumbers or Plumbing Firms or Other Entities on Such Terms as Are Necessary to Alleviate the Critical Shortage of Plumbers and in the City's Workforce.
Motion to approve discussion.
Second.
Discussion, Councilman Wilson.
Thank you. Just want to thank all members for signing onto this bill and allowing us to come to the Standing Committee and then entertaining the recentists so we can get this all done today. A final vote. So this is something that's important to all of our residents, especially, you know, people that use our public facilities, whether it's a restroom or water fountain. So we definitely foresee the summertime when it comes, and we want to make sure that there's water turned on. So looking forward to getting this bill passed because what this does is several things. It authorizes the administration to do contracting with multiple different avenues, in particular, well, you know, maybe look at a couple of points here. What it does is a couple of things, is it, you know, allows us to enter into any sort of MOU and especially pay back any sort of authority. One in particular is PWSA. I want to thank Councilperson Strauss, our chair here today, for coordinating the discussion around PWSA and plumbers helping us out so that they can be offered some overtime in the evenings and weekends so we can try and get this done. And, you know, everyone knows that we have one plumber, and we don't want that situation to, you know, come around again, although we love our current plumber, he's doing a fantastic job. We need to pay that person more and also have additional plumbers that, you know, should be paid more. So we're, really what we're talking about is being more competitive, and this also speaks to that. And on all these fronts, it identifies, the bill identifies two different accounts, you can't have this, no, two different accounts where we'd pay it out of. So one is the Parks Trust Fund, and the other one is a DPW account. So just want to make sure that, you know, we get this done today so that council's in full support of, you know, what the administration can get done here. Been in talks with Director Pollock, so I thank his, the opportunity to discuss this matter with him. The Director Hornstein, this has been a longstanding issue for him, I know, so hopefully we definitely get to some resolution with this this year and also in future years. It's just been really important to be competitive. I know that, you know, in talks with the union president, they're really, you know, concerned just about the wages that we have here currently, and that would need to be increased. So what's been negotiated is just a base pay of what we have here, and we can pay more than that. So there's several unions that are doing that across the nation, so there's no, there's no reason why we can't pay more to be more competitive, even though that the, what's shown in the budget, which I believe is 59,000, we can pay more than that so they're more competitive. So, because there's several things throughout the year. It's not just water fountains. It's, it's the restrooms that go, you know, that go in this current building, which happened just recently, where there was a restroom on our floor that was out of, you know, out of order. So, and, you know, leaked through the ceiling, and we have to pay additional costs for that. So there's multiple, everyone needs a plumber. So, thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, so this, this will allow us to go into contract with plumbers, not necessarily because we don't have any city plumbers, like private plumbers? Sure? Oh, I guess it's something, Madam Chair.
Interrogatory.
This basically lays out all avenues, whether authorities or even our, you know, our current, what we have under contract to do, you know, to do that contract, I mean, to literally activate that. But my understanding is that the quickest way would probably be to be working with plumbers that we could start reimbursing them on an hourly basis because, and our plumber orchestrate, our plumbing operations orchestrate that whole situation because if we, from my talks with the department, if we go and put this couple of work together to then contract that out, that could be, then we have to wait for the quote to come back, that could be some time. And if we have, you know, willing plumbers to, I mean, obviously they'd be reimbursed, but, you know, if they're going to do some overtime work for us, then, you know, they can work on an hourly basis and we can, they could show up, you know, with the wrench and, and they, you know, hand them, they're going to separate the list on easy ones versus hard ones in terms of water fountains, and give the easy one, the easier ones to the ones that would show up with the wrench and they would be directed, we have other parts that are in a warehouse, like a backflow preventer, and different parts, as you see, like the guts are taken out and they got to put that back. Everything they do to winterize it that's in the, they would all be given it, you know, like a gift package.
Yeah, I'm fully supportive of it. I guess my question really is, we only have one plumber, and we just hired like at least 40 new public works employees. Is it pay scale, do you know?
Definitely pay scale. I mean, you look at what they're getting paid at the airport. I mean, it's just not attractive enough to get that, so.
Same way with our engineers and everything else, I guess it's, okay. Oh, that's it for me.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Kell Smith.
Thank you. I just want to thank you all for the work on this. And I do want to make sure that people know at home who told us to call PWSA, that it is something that you have looked into, and that this does not preclude them from participating in this, that PWSA could be part of this app. But I do want the public to know that we are, you have looked in every avenue, including talking to PWSA. And I do think that we need to get some, we talked about getting additional people hired. I think the plumbers are definitely, you know, one of those positions that we want to make sure that we fill, not just the plumbers, but we've given a lot of positions. We need to make sure those positions are matching up with the needs of the city of Pittsburgh and our residents. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 602, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to new papers, Bill 580.
Bill 580, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works and/or the Director of the Department of Finance to Enter Into Leases, Subleases, Subleases, and/or Amendments for Approximately 8,000 Square Feet at 294 Simple Street, 15213, with the LSE, the Oakland Planning and Development Corporation, for the Purpose of Providing Space, the OPDC, to Provide Various Readiness and Training Programs for Young People and Adults in Public Community Meetings and Events for a Five-Year Period at No Cost to the City.
Motion to approve.
Discussion.
Discussion, second discussion.
I'm just curious, who's, who's with that organization?
OPD's Oakland Planning and Development Committee. I mean, it's.
No, I know Oakland, I know who it is. I know what it is. I'm just wondering who the executive director is currently, that's all.
It's Andrea Boykowitz.
Oh, Andrea is there? Okay. Are you doing this program? No? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 580, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 589.
Bill 589, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements with the Federal Highway Administration for the Purpose of Receiving and Spending Reconnecting Community Pilot Program Grant Funds in the Amount of $1,432,000 to Support Planning and Engagement in the Manchester Neighborhood.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 589, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Human Resources Committee chaired by Councilman Charlin.
Bill 574, Resolution Providing for the Filing of Applications by the Commonwealth of PA Department of Human Services for Grants in Connection with the Joint Jobs Initiative Program Employment Advancement and Retention Network, and Providing for the Authorization to Enter Into Agreements with Various Agencies and to Pay for Expenditures for Costs to Support Implement and Administer the Program, Costs Not to Exceed $3,828,594.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion. Councilwoman Warwick. I guess I just, is there someone here to speak to this one?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
No, leave it on. You don't even have to touch it.
I think the other one.
You know how sensitive they are.
I'm Deidre Cochran. I'm the Assistant Director for the Pittsburgh Partnership through the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service. This is actually a grant that is given to us yearly from the Department of Human Services from the state of PA. So it doesn't cost the city any money.
Okay, could you just speak a little bit to the, to the work that you do with this grant?
Well, yes, so we are referred clients from the Department of Human Services to help them find employment and to become self-sufficient. So we've teamed up with Goodwill, EDSI, and it's called Padco, it's another subcontractor. So we refer those clients to those agencies. They help them with all the things that they need to be, I'm sorry, I didn't even introduce myself. I'm Kayla Loudon-Waller, the ER supervisor. Let's back up. So, yeah, so basically what we do is help, the Department of Human Services sends us to the clients. We help them to become self-sufficient with finding employment or even going to school, whatever it is that they would like to do to help them become self-sufficient.
So what, what type of clients do you see generally? Is it young people or?
It would be anyone who applies for public assistance, cash assistance. So that could be from 18 to probably maybe 60, depending on if it's like a grandparent that has the responsibility of a child.
Do they have to have applied for cash assistance?
Yes.
Oh, I see. I see. And in terms of the, so, so let's just say, you know, someone is referred to you, they make an appointment to come down and to your, you're downtown, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. So what, what, I mean, do you sit down with them and like help them write resume? Like what, what type of, just sort of hold their hand until they get the job?
Kind of, sort of. So it starts with an orientation process. So there's all kinds of paperwork that they need to sign that's regulated through the state, so we have to abide by their rules and regulations. They agree to this. In order for you to continue to receive cash assistance from the Department of Human Services, you have, it's not a yes or a no.
make an appointment to come down and to your, you're downtown, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so what, I mean, do you sit down with them and like help them write resume, like what type of, just sort of hold their hand until they get the job?
Kinda, sorta, so it starts with an orientation process, so there's all kind of paperwork that they need to sign, that's regulated through the state, so we have to abide by their rules and regulations, they agree to this, in order for you to continue to receive cash assistance from the Department of Human Services, you have, it's not a yes or a no, it's either you will or you won't receive the cash assistance. So through that process, there's resume building, there's career builders, there's all type of different avenues that we have, and our subcontractors as well, that we send them to, so that they can help them to their next step. We also have licensed counselors, because most of us know that there's barriers sometimes that'll prohibit you from becoming successful, so we attack those barriers, help them with anything they need, from homelessness, domestic violence, anything that may hinder them becoming self-sufficient. So we work with them through that process up until they find employment, after the employment, we follow them for a year, just to make sure that we don't cut them off, and it's, they kind of end up coming right back because of the things that they gain, or, you know, how we can help them through that process, but there's a lot entailed in that, but the gist of it is to help them with whatever they need to become self-sufficient, and not need the public assistance.
I'm tracking, okay. Yeah, so, okay, I just, I'm only asking because I've sort of, I've found it, that there's, there seem to be lots of organizations that, you know, are centered around workforce development, but then, you know, when I get, you know, a young person who contacts me saying, hey, can you help me find something, it's very hard to get them to someone who will actually sit down with them, and hold their hand, and walk them through, and give them the, you know, like, that seems very, it's like, there's lots of referrals, like, oh, go, you know, oh, here's a website, go check that out, or whatever, but that's not, it's like, the actual, like, no, we're going to check out this website together, and I'm going to help you make this phone call, and that type of thing.
Absolutely, so I mean, if you run across someone and they do not receive those, you know, you could refer them to the Department of Human Services, it's unfortunate we can't recruit.
Yeah.
You know, so, although we have the opportunity, they call, which is a direct referral, so let's just say, I run across someone that you have, I can tell them what to do to get there, and then once they're with me, we pretty much hold their hand the whole way through.
Okay.
So there's that whole one-on-one, there's, you know, once they're in the program, they're good to go, but it's getting them there, and unfortunately, Earn does not, we can't go through the community and promote.
Right, right. So they would have to qualify for assistance?
Correct.
Is it easy to qualify for the assistance?
Absolutely, if you're not working and you have children that are not...
What if you're like a high school graduate, and you're just like, okay?
Well, there's different programs for them, and once they go to like the Department of Human Services, or even if they're, we have clients that have high schoolers, so we know the different resources that we can submit them to.
Okay.
For those age groups.
Okay, so, and you could get them to somebody who then would do that thing that they need, which is like, walk them through the process?
Yes, they're called direct referrals, yes.
Okay, well, maybe I'll take your card after this.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, that's...
You're welcome.
Thanks, councilperson, Councilwoman Kayla Smith.
Thank you, I heard you mention DHS, I just have a lot of concerns with DHS in general, I mean, from CYF to the mental health services, they provide all sorts of things, but one of the things that struck me, as soon as you said the county, I was thinking about the county, and I know that somebody was just let go of, from the treasurer's office, Anthony, you know the, Councilman Coghill knows the story too, was let go from the treasurer's office with a disability, and I wonder what you do to make sure that the county's following some of their own guidelines and things that they're saying, that they, are they talking about helping people with disabilities, or are they really helping people with disabilities? That's what I'd like to know.
Well, the county has its own Earn program, so we're separate, the county has...
But you work with them, right?
No.
You don't work with, collaborate with them at all?
No.
So what do we do to make sure that we're helping people with disabilities?
We don't work with disabilities personally.
With anybody?
No, we...
But somebody who might need a hand, it's just financial, financial assistance, or because they need financial help, or because they need help in general with job, employment?
We really can't...
I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, we don't work anything with, now, if we have a client who has a disability, then we work with that client, but we don't do anything with the general public who may have disabilities.
Okay, I would tell you, the reason I even bring it up is because this person was let go, and it's my understanding, they have a degree, they managed to put themselves through school, but they were let go from, I think, a mailroom, can't get a job as a bagger at the airport, doing baggage, and it's my understanding it was because he was hired from somebody politically beforehand, and I think that is just not okay.
No.
I mean, you can't talk about helping people, you've got to either really be helping people and really be about it, or stop talking about it, so.
Right.
For me, I just want to make sure, I feel so badly for this person who's, I think he has ADHD and some other issues, but, you know, he's done his battle and struggles trying to get himself through school, and I just hate for us to use those as talking points for political talking points, and then not follow up when somebody really needs us, thank you.
And Career Link may also be able to help.
Career Link, I've actually referred him to a couple other places, I think Achieve or some other place.
Okay.
But it's, I just feel bad for the person, because he really does have a, truly has a disability.
Sorry, thank you. I thought it was close.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I wish we could help him, we just aren't set up to do it.
I don't even think he lives in the city, I think he lives in the county, right?
Nice Scott County guy.
Yeah, he doesn't live in the city, so it's not, but I'm thinking, if he's, there's one of him, there's others of him, that might be needing the same kind of help, that's all.
Yeah, and anyone that they refer to the City of Earn program, we've had pretty much all walks of life, we absolutely work with them.
Can I just say real quick, it was not Executive Director Anna Marotta's office, I want to make sure, I want to make sure, very clear, if it were, I would have said it, it wasn't her office.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Madam Chair, so, yeah, I'm following along here, and, so, the people referred, you only with being, accepting this contract and these funds are restricted to the people that are referred to you from DHS.
Correct.
And DHS finds those clients because they've applied for state cash assistance?
Correct.
Okay, and the state cash assistance, that's like the federal funds, right, the federal programs, okay, so, it's either the federal government or the state government that's saying like, well, we're not going to approve your cash assistance request until you do all this employment training.
Absolutely.
And then you're the employment training people?
Yes.
Okay, so, we're using our internal Department of Human Resources to receive the federal, basically state contract here, but it's federal fund contract, to be the people who are doing the work, the required work training, so that they can receive their cash assistance, so, but the exciting part, I think, that has got our interest, is that we have an internal capacity for doing this workforce training, right, and it's something that we talk about a lot, and there are outside nonprofits that also do it, it turns out some of them are sub recipients, I was trying to break down the sub recipients, you said Goodwill...
Subcontractors.
Subcontractors, what was the other ones?
Goodwill, Padco, and EDSI.
EDSI.
Educational Data Systems Incorporated.
Great, thank you. I think I kind, I know the Goodwill facility, and I've toured the training program, not in a while, but I didn't realize maybe exactly what all the relationship was, so I'm happy to see that. But since we have this internal capacity, if you, if we budgeted funds separate and outside of this, then we could maybe have a more robust capacity to do some of the things that council members are asking about.
We would have to probably...
We'd have to figure out how to pay for it, because that's what we do here.
Right, right.
So if we figured out how to pay for it, you have that skill set in your organizational chart.
Yes, we may need more staff to do that, but we could definitely work that out.
Thank you, I think that's really interesting, I too have had conversations, especially with teenagers, some inside my district, some outside my district, and we were going to have, we're about to have a follow-up meeting about the Learn and Earn contract, because it was a couple of summers where they didn't get a response, and I know this is someone who is on other forms of assistance, and whose mom and his household really needed that summer income, and they didn't, you know, they applied for Learn and Earn and never, there was no follow-through, and so we were concerned about that, and, and other people too, but they may, other teenagers may not have been in that kind of target income universe, and so, okay, maybe they just didn't get followed up with because they weren't the kind of priority population, and those are just teenagers, but I think there are other constituents as well who maybe could benefit, and have reached Delta Council offices for these exact kinds of things, and instead of, like you said, referring them to some random website, if we had internal capacity, it'd be helpful to us, so that's food for thought, so I appreciate that, thank you for coming to the table.
Thank you for considering us.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman, any further comments first round, second round, we'll move to Councilperson Warwick, followed by Councilwoman Kayla Smith.
Just one quick, the Councilwoman Gross reminded me, so, when you, when you place folks with jobs, is there, with the Learn and Earn, that reminded me, because, so, for example, the high school program learns, earns like nine dollars or something an hour, and then the sort of more professional program is like twelve an hour, so it's like, these programs are there, but they don't, you can make more at Target or Kennywood, right, so what, you know, which is, so is there, in the programs where you try and place people, is there some kind of like, you know, we're trying to get people in jobs that are fifteen dollars an hour and up, like fifteen to twenty? Go ahead.
And one thing that I just want to make clear is, for the Learn and Earn program, the only thing that our office does is determine eligibility.
Right.
Partner for Work runs the program, so I'm not sure exactly how they do that, but we only determine eligibility, but they place the children, they place the kids like at the different work sites, and the different providers, and things like that, so I can't, we can't answer that, but I can find out, I can ask them, and we could bring it up even at our meeting.
But for this, for this program?
Oh, so for, yes, we have, we have collaborations with a lot of employers that are hiring for above minimum wage, so most of them are coming in at fifteen, you know, things that I mentioned, so it's not a low.
Okay.
And that's one of our benchmarks, is to help them find employment that will take them off of, out of that, you know what I mean, so we definitely work with a higher wage.
Okay.
Versus a minimum wage.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
No, 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 that's fine, that's what I was, that's what I was wondering about, that the jobs that you're steering people toward are, you know, on the higher end versus the lower end?
Yes, because it's a no-brainer, they would just stay on the cash assistance, honestly, so we, our target is to get them employment that's, you know, with, you know, a lot of your education or background and experience that plays a part in that, but that is our goal, to make sure that we find them meaningful employment, we want to go to like career and not, okay, you just take this job right now, and, you know, so our goal is to reach for stars.
And I think too, there's a lot, I mean, these days, right, really fifteen an hour is the minimum you should be making anywhere, anywhere, right, whether you're, you know, Target or Kennywood or whatever, so it's like, you know, to make sure that we're getting folks, that that should be the base.
And a lot of employers now are recognizing, if you want someone in the building...
Yeah.
You kind of have to pay them.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kayla Smith.
I just want to be very clear, because my statement was kind of harsh, I want to be very clear, that if anything, after I discovered about this employee being dismissed, I contacted Sarah Anna Marotta's office, and they were very helpful, if anything, they're helping me look for something for that person, because they realized that we should be doing what we say we're going to do, so, just want to put that out there, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Mosley.
I just have one, a quick question, like, what is the income threshold that would allow someone to then move beyond the cash assistance program?
A lot takes some place with that, and that's a calculation that the Department of Human Services has, so let's say, for instance, you have a household, you have five children, you know what I mean, so it depends on, I couldn't give you like a ballpark, if you have one child, it's different than if you have five, so also you are able to keep some of your benefits because you're dependent, you have a lot of dependents, so it just depends.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 574, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, thank you.
Thank you for your...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That moves us on to Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Mosley.
Bill 581, resolution amending Resolution 507 of 2021, which authorized the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for work in connection with the Flurry Way Project, the city will participate in the project in providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $859,137.09 and increase of $294,428.08 from the previously authorized amount.
Motion to approve.
Have a second? Second, thank you. Any discussion? Bill 581.
Maybe I should have a second, I don't know.
Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of Bill 581, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Having exhausted our meeting agenda, we move on to announcements. Council offices will be closed tomorrow, Wednesday, June 19th, and observance of Juneteenth holiday. Next week, council will hold a regular in standing committees meeting on Tuesday, June 25th, and Wednesday, June 26th, at 10:00 a.m. respectively. Registration ends at 9:00 a.m. the morning of each meeting. To register to speak at these council meetings, please fill out the signup form in its entirety on the council meeting webpage. You may also register by calling the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Can I please get a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting, and as a reminder, we will be moving back into our regular, we will reconvene our regular meeting, which we recessed earlier this morning.
So moved.
Wait, did we recess the meeting this morning?
Actually, thank you, I neglected to also offer any opportunity for comments from members.
Happy Juneteenth on Wednesday.
Thank you, Councilwoman, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of, do we have a second for approving the minutes and adjourn the meeting?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.
Did we recess the meeting today?
Yeah, we're just going to sit here and gavel.
I didn't know we did that.
We recessed this morning.